Welcome to your mental health community hosted by NAMI Miami Dade. We're excited to be here to bring resources, ideas, actionable, actionable efforts that you can make to support the mental wellness of your loved ones and yourself. NAMI Miami Dade is the Miami and Monroe County Keys affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the largest peer-to-peer mental health organization in the U.S. with over 600 affiliates nationwide. Peer-to-peer means that our free programs, education, support groups, outreach, speaker meetings, and campus initiatives are all brought by people who are trained to a NAMI national standard in an evidence-based model, are all trained by NAMI national to bring these programs and have lived experience either as a family member with a mental health condition or an individual living with a mental health condition. We believe strongly that knowledge, awareness, knowing where the resources are, knowing what you need to know, in other words, mental health literacy is really important for all of us in the community. I'm the mom of a young man who developed a serious mental illness in college, and I did not have the literacy and knowledge and tools to help him and to support him. In fact, I didn't even know what was going on with him because I was not aware of the warning signs. I can tell you that it's really important to have that knowledge and education, and the purpose of our programs on community news is to make sure that our community is aware of the resources we have in the community, how to access them, and when to access them. Today, we're talking about youth mental health. Summer is here, school is out. I grew up in New York, and I just remember the sense of excitement that beach days were beckoning. Of course, here we have beach days all year round, but nonetheless, for many of our children, summer means that school has concluded, and they're now on their own. We will discuss today what caregivers need to know to support their children's mental health during the summer and about the resources for youth mental health in our community. And I'm so thrilled joining me today are two professionals who've dedicated their entire careers to our youth. Sally Alion is Assistant Superintendent of Miami Dade Public Schools' Department of Mental Health. Bringing her career experience as a principal and assisted, as a principal of a high school and a middle school and a senior administrator, Sally created and developed a robust and rich mental health department for our Miami Dade Public Schools, the fourth-largest school district in the country. Maria Gerardo is manager of the Children's System of Care for Thriving Minds South Florida, our managing entity for Miami Dade and Monroe. These two experts will join me in discussing what we need to know about youth mental health, what we need to know about resources in the community, and considerations for caring for our youth now that summer is here. So, welcome Sally, and welcome Maria.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be with you today. Thank you for being with us. I thought it would, it would be a good idea to open our conversation with a general overview of your organizations. Thriving Minds South Florida is an organization that, that is absolutely amazing, and I think the community needs to know more about it. And then Sally, after Maria gives us an overview, if you could talk about Miami Dade Public Schools and the tremendous, wonderful department that you've built. So, Thriving Minds.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you for having me here. Thriving Minds South Florida has a network of providers for mental health and substance use services, not just for children and youth, but for adults as well. We are able to provide services through our network of providers for anybody who's uninsured or underinsured, and there's an array of services, outpatient services, they can be therapy group, family therapy, psychiatric services, and like we, like I mentioned, for youth and/or adults alike.
And so, give us an example of some of your providers and, and how individuals can connect with your services?
Okay. We have providers throughout the entire county, and not just in Miami Dade, but in Monroe as well. In Monroe County, you're able to access the Guidance Care Center for those services, and you're able to call, explain what your needs are, and they can guide you as to what service would best fit your child's need. In Miami Dade County, we have providers such as Jackson Community Mental Health Center, Citrus Health Network, CHI, which are our larger community mental health centers, but we also have agencies that provide support, such as Federation of Families, or for substance use services, we have agencies such as The Village, just to name a few. We have 41, so I don't want to pick out a particular agency, but
Sure.
You know, those are some of the examples of agencies.
And NAMI is proud to be one of the 41.
Yes.
So, thank you very much.
Very happy to have you.
Just as an aside, and we were talking about this before, when NAMI rebooted in 2016, the very first believer that our community should have a strong NAMI was Thriving Minds South Florida Behavioral Health Network, who gave us our seed grant to got it, to get us restarted. So, it's
It's wonderful to have you as one of our providers and see how it's grown throughout the years.
Well, and you do cover the whole continuum of service.
Correct.
From our, from education and outreach, as NAMI provides, to outpatient, inpatient,
Correct. We have prevention in the school systems also, and residential treatment
Great.
as well.
Great. And Thriving Minds could be accessed thrivingmind.org, and we will talk a little more and do a deeper dive into some of the services and issues. And under your leadership, Sally, oh my gosh, those last four years have been incredible. You started a department more or less de novo.
Well, first of all, Susan, thank you so much for having me here today. So great to be with another great partner, Maria, today. And I will say that when we first started our department, I'll touch on that right away, one of the first partners we did develop was National Alliance on Mental Illness. I had the beautiful opportunity to meet Susan, and here we are four years later. So, the partnership continues. But just a little history real quick, I mean, well before, four years ago, well before the Department of Mental Health Services came about. Of course, Miami Dade County Public Schools has always prioritized the social, emotional, and mental wellbeing of all students. We've always had school counselors, social workers, and psychologists. And then unfortunately, with the tragedy of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas in Parkland, Florida, that tragedy did spur legislation to move forward with Senate Bill 7026, which proffered the mental health assistance allocation for all school districts, all 67 districts in the state of Florida. So, at that time, our superintendent and our school board immediately said, you know, in lieu of just using those funds and infusing them into existing departments, we really want to show the prevalence and the exerted efforts that we will make to utilize those funds to best support our students. So, here we are, just about four years in with the Department of Mental Health Services in Miami Dade County Public Schools. And one of the things we did really quickly was to establish a brand-new position, job, created a whole new job description, that is of a mental health coordinator. Didn't exist anywhere in the state of Florida. And with that said, we were able to really hire, we started with 30, we're at 118 now, and we're not done, but those coordinators support every single one of our schools, K through 12, and that is exactly it. They're very clinical background, and they are coordinating services directly in the schools for students, whether it's right there in the school, or at certain point, if they need additional support, we refer them to some of the agencies that we have contracted with. So, that is a very streamlined process available for students Monday through Friday, and all of the services come at no cost. And there's a lot added to it, a lot of training has taken place for staff, like what is, what am I looking for when I notice that a child, what does it mean to have a mental health issue? What is a mental health crisis? What's your challenge? So, we have put the Youth Mental Health First Aid Training, which is under the auspice of the National Council on Mental Wellbeing, and we're working to get every single staff member in our school district trained on that, because they, you know, they are able to, they're not all mental health professionals, obviously. So, what, what do I do when I recognize that child is having something, just is it behavioral, or is it really a mental health challenge? I'm not really sure. I'm trying to figure this out, but bottom line is referring that child immediately for the help they need. So, that's kind of the quick foundation of the department, and I'm sure that we'll get to talk a little bit more about some of the other things as well.
Amazing. 118 coordinators really having an impact, and we all know how important interaction with youth and their families is. A child can't learn if they're not well mentally. So, how, how does during the school year, a family access the department and, and seek services? And then, if you could just speak, okay, during the summer, what would be your advice to families who may need some help?
So, awareness is key. I mean, we have really blasted to all parties that we are here to help. That's been our motto since we started. We are here to help mental wellness matters. So, we've really put out a lot of campaigns. Immediately, we started with, we created a website, we created a Twitter account, we created flyers, and just put those all around throughout the schools, out the community, so everybody did understand, we're here to help. And it's really simple access. A parent or caregiver, all they need to do is contact their child's school, contact their child's school. And if that isn't working for you, then they can call our office. We have a, well, forget the office, we actually have a parent assistance line that was created from the get-go, and that is 305-995-7100. And we always have a licensed mental health professional answering the phone call.
That's incredible.
We are, yes, it's Monday through Friday. It's not, it's not a crisis line, but it's an immediate assistance line, and it's really helps us in these months in the summer, when not all children are at summer school. So, now their child is at home, they might, the child's school might not be open for summer school.
Right.
So, just utilize that, that line, and we will ensure that we connect the child, and always we do our, we always want the family involved every time that we're working with, with a child. And we, so we do have group counseling, we have family counseling at the school sites, but we also have it to a much bigger magnitude through the agencies that we contract with.
Excellent. Just for the viewers' sake, could you repeat parent assistance line?
Sure.
And that number, that's very critical.
305-995-7100. And our website is mentalhealthservices.dadeschools.net, mentalhealthservices.dadeschools.net.
Fantastic. Fantastic resources. So, we have a community landscape of providers that have children's care programs, and we have a school system that is responsive so directly to our children's mental health. So, let's do a little bit of a deeper dive into the community, why this is so important, and what families, caregivers, friends need to know. I reflect on my own experience. My son was struggling for several years before we understood that those signs were warning signs of a mental illness, and not just sowing his oats and getting used to adulthood and leaving the nest, but were signs of serious mental illness. So, I've almost made it a personal mission to make sure families know what warning signs are and what they're dealing with. I didn't know when Matthew became ill that most mental illnesses start in late teens to early adulthood. And, and so that, that is, you know, our children in middle school, high school, and college. Overlay that with the impact of the pandemic, recent study in 2021, and I just would like to level-set the landscape a little bit, saw a 31% increase in emergency department visits that turned out to be mental health, self-harm and mental health. Children, 40% of youth say that they're depressed, 20% have thought about suicide, 10% have made a plan, and 5% have executed. Those are very frightening numbers, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Surgeon General, and the CDC, and even First Lady Jill Biden have all rung the alarm on this. So, prevention and early intervention is critical. Fortunately for us, we weren't that early, we could have been much earlier, but we were able to help our son recover fully. And that's also something that I like to message to families, is that mental health conditions are treatable, they're recoverable, and the earlier, like any other medical condition, the better. So, what do we, what do families, caregivers, grandparents need to observe with their children to know, okay, I need to call that parent assistant line, or I need to call Thriving Minds, or I need to call my family doctor, because this is not just acting out or having a bad day. Sally and Maria?
Yeah, I could kick that off. And one of the things we really have harped on is, is education, training, awareness, not only for students and staff, but for parents as well, for caregivers as well, and really working so hard to just simply say, mental health is just as important as physical health. It just is, and they go hand in hand. If your child's going to succeed academically and emotionally through their schooling years, they're going to have, have to have both of those. And we're really working to erase that stigma. We're making much more progress. We absolutely are. We are seeing more parents and caregivers open to the idea that their child may need help. So, for, from our end, we always say, clearly, one of the first signs is if there's any regression in the student's academics, if in your child's academics, that could be a clear, why is that happening? But then sometimes it's, it's way different than that. It could be them changing their groups of friends, maybe not even wanting to be with friends anymore. Could be, and their, their eating habits, their, their weight, their appearance, this, the way that they, they looked, used to look, and they've changed, changed their appearance. It could be behavior, it could be anger. So, you just can't rule anything out, but at the moment that you see a change, you, as a parent, caregiver, you really need to address that. And as you said, prevention, catching it early. Maybe it's not a big, big challenge as, as it may seem, but again, taking that, that opportunity to take advantage of all the resources that we have in our school district, like Maria mentioned, throughout the county that are available. And, and again, we said, we're, we're here to help, and that's it, and that's exactly the motto that we have. And we want, we want parents, we want students to continue to refer. Not, and I'll tell you what, students are starting to refer, sometimes themselves, but they're also, we've done a lot of education that came down from the state on some mandated mental health awareness for students in grades six through 12. And they're starting to say, speak up and say, I believe my friend is concerning to me. I, they said some things, they're doing some things that are a little bit concerning to me, and they're, they're referring their friends now. And that, that is helping, because let's face it, children typically, who do they first tell that they're having?
Absolutely.
Something with a friend.
Right. And that's the basis of our Ending the Silence program that we partner with you in the schools, is to, to tell kids that it's okay to seek help, and it's okay also to talk about a friend who needs help. Don't be silent.
And I want to mention that. I mentioned the, the requirement from the state for the education, but, and that's a great program that we have, but truly, Susan mentioned, the NAMI Ending the Silence program that we have been able to bring into our middle and senior high schools is really, we'll cut, we call it a winner. It's a win-win. It's a win-win for the NAMI professionals who come in, especially those young professionals who, as you said earlier, have, have experienced a mental health challenge themselves. And for our students, you know, 13 to 18 years old, to sit and hear that and under, and say, maybe, yeah, it's okay not to be okay.
Right.
That's okay. And look, she, this young man, young lady, had, had some challenges, and they came through, and that spurs them to speak up a little bit for themselves, and also speak up for a friend as well.
Great. Thank you. And what do you see in terms of your, the children that, that Thriving Minds addresses through its provider network, Maria?
We've seen, you know, I want to piggyback off of what Sally mentioned about friends, referring friends. We've seen a lot of youth now referring their friends to programs and, and speaking up and saying it is okay to not feel okay, and there is help. And I feel that that helps youth tremendously. Sometimes you don't want to go to your parent, you know, and you need that friend. And now, youth are referring to programs or providing that support. Sometimes you just need somebody there for you, and we see youth helping one another more.
And listening.
Listening.
Listening and being empathetic. So, you know, in addition to the Ending the Silence for Youth that we provide for the public schools, we have Ending the Silence for Families, and we work with Miami Dade Public Libraries and provide that on Zoom, as well as you can call the NAMI office and schedule one for your organization, your church, your mosque, your synagogue. And it, it's an hour presentation that gives family members an opportunity to know what are the warning signs. Sally, you mentioned the warning signs, check, check, check with Matthew, but they happen at a time when you're not sure if it's just a transitional behavior thing, or whether it's, it's onset of something more serious. And I always say that if, if a child sprays, falls and sprains their leg, you don't assume it isn't broken. You'd get care, you'd talk to a professional, and then, and then decide your next step. And I think the same thing is for mental health. And, and it's really important to, to be aware of these warning signs. In addition to Thriving Minds' amazing website and the school's mental health department website, our NAMI website has warning signs and statistics and all kinds of information about youth mental health. We mentioned stigma, and one of the barriers that, that, there are two significant barriers to healthcare, and the reason why most youth are not treated, and most adults are not treated. One is stigma, and the other is not, barriers or not being aware of resources. And we talked about the amazing resources you have. Let's spend a minute on, you know, a moment on stigma. So, it, you know, in the school system, if a child or a parent reaches out for help, how, how have you managed to overcome the fear that that child would be labeled with, you know, that there would be an issue, you know, some kind of stigma of, you know, of having reached that? And the same thing, Maria, as you look at the overall community you serve, how, how has stigma changed? How do we deal with stigma? What helps? Break that down.
And I, for us at Thriving Minds, we try and connect the family to a community-based organization that understands that culture and that aligns with that, that culture. So, you, you understand where the family's coming from, and we all have the same needs, but how do we address those needs in a way that the family's receptive?
Mm-hmm.
Right, to the, to the help. The help is there, but if the family's not receptive, then, right, it's, it's almost in vain.
So, you're treating the whole family?
Correct.
The child and the whole family. Absolutely.
And we, we do look at that as how do we help the family, because in helping the family, you're helping the child. So, really reaching out to that parent and assisting them as well, not just the child.
And letting them know that there's nothing to be afraid of.
Correct.
And education and literacy tends to erase fear as well.
Yeah, and I would say the same, and we, we've worked very hard to, with, with the mental health coordinators that we've hired, number one, they have great training, and that's one of the areas that really, they received special training in that, how to help a reluctant student, or how to help a reluctant parent. And we all, as Maria said, we, with the agencies that we have established contracts with, we ensure that they are ready to meet the needs of all cultures, and any, any type of language, we say from county line to county line road, we will find that support that will really help that. We even experienced that when we had some children come over here from Ukraine, and we had to work a little deeper to, you know, pivot a little bit to make sure that we were able to work through our agencies and find that specific, specific individuals that were trained to really help in that language and, you know, transition those students. So, we, we, we will, we will, like I said, we're here to help. We, you know, the, the biggest battle is getting people to come in and receive the help. But I can tell you, a wave is coming through, I won't even say our school district, I feel it in the whole community, because we do talk about it a lot more.
Right.
I think this generation of kids in general, I think it's harder for the parents and caregivers, but this generation of students, they talk about it. They want to talk about it. We have developed what we call mental wellness clubs in our schools, where we have students lead mental health awareness activities, because sometimes at the end of the day, it's like, oh, enough for the adults. Let, we, we're the kids, we got this, and we've put it in their hands, as we do in other clubs in our schools.
Absolutely.
So, where they're starting to lead activities in their school, in the community, connecting to resources. We had many at your wonderful NAMI walk, we had many of those clubs were there, with students.
Yes.
So, again, this group of kids, this generation is growing up with this and understanding that there's a prevalence. They're also dealing with a lot of things that we didn't deal with. And that social media, we can be really honest, that has really, really put a
Yes.
a light on students and how they have had a lot of different challenges dealing with social media that we didn't have growing up. You know, they're behind.
It's very worrisome. I mean, I remember growing up, you know, the bullying took place at the bus stop, and once you got to school, you were in a safe space. With social media, it's 24/7. It's something that, in fact, one of our future NAMI programs is going to address that. We've already started talking about recruiting some experts who've done some, you know, academic studies on the issue, because it is a huge issue. It's one that parents have trouble controlling.
Yes.
And, you know, talking about it, talking about it, community news, talking about it openly in the classroom and in our social venues is really important. And that's what we, you know, what we bring to the table at NAMI, that's what we want everybody to be talking about. Sally mentioned the walk, we had 1,200 people, a lot of students. I loved it. I love seeing kids with, you know, their school T-shirts, talking about mental wellness and looking at resources. So, all very, very exciting. I'm just, we are so grateful to have amazing resources in this community and really compassionate, wonderful people who really care about this topic. And, and I just wanted to give you both a chance for a couple of final takeaways as we conclude our program, and then I'll take it and talk about our, our next programs.
So, I just want to say, you know, for everyone, not just parents, but be aware of those subtle changes in an individual. And it can be a student, it can be a child, it can be an adult.
Right.
Changes in their mood, isolation, changes in sleeping habits and eating habits, because mental health affects anyone, not just our children in our school system. And be open to conversation. Ask and inquire about what they did.
How are you feeling?
And how are you feeling, and, and, you know, what went right today and what went wrong, and kind of cue that conversation with others around you.
Right. That's great, great advice.
And look at our website, thrivingmind.org, and other resources that are on our website as well.
Thank you.
Pretty much the same, to tell you the truth. I had just thought of a couple of things off the top that are key. Prevention is key. Now, clearly, there are some, some children and families that need a lot more support already into a challenge, but we have worked very hard to be preventative, be proactive, bring a lot of positive mental wellness programs into the schools for children to learn that, you know, it's, they're going to learn to cope, be resilient, just some basic, basic life skills that will help them early, because not, they are going to face challenges.
Right.
And trying to help them with some of those practices. So, prevention, we've talked a lot about awareness. Awareness is key, understanding what, what mental health is, understanding that it's okay not to be okay, understanding there's so many resources out there. And then again, bottom line, seeking help. There's so much help out there. We're just three entities sitting here today, but there's so much help out there.
There's a robust community, there's a helpline at Miami Dade Public Schools, there's a helpline at NAMI, 305-665-2540. There's a helpline at Thriving Minds, answered all by live people who, who, who will care about and want to help the community. I would just thank you so much for being with us today. I want to mention a couple of things in addition. NAMI has two support groups a week for parents of children, focused on children. has two support groups a week for parents of children, focused on children, Wednesday nights and one Saturday morning, facilitated by a trained facilitator who has lived experience as a parent with children that have successfully navigated through the mental health system. We have nine support groups a week on Zoom for if your spouse, a parent, a sibling has mental health issues. We also have support groups for people living with mental health issues. And finally, I mentioned these statistics about harm and suicide, the alarming statistics. As a result, with the support of the Florida Department of Children and Families and Thriving Minds South Florida, NAMI has a robust suicide prevention program. We provide free suicide trainings. We have three coming up on Zoom, June 16th, 18th, and 22nd, and one live on the 28th in person, free to the community. Go to nammimiami.org to register. I guarantee you, it will be the best hour and 10 minutes you've ever spent, and it may save a life. It may save a loved one, a neighbor, a staff member, a colleague, someone that you see in the gym once in a while. Feel free to reach out to nammimiami.org and these other organizations if you need help. We're all here to help, and we care very deeply. Our next programs will be covering wellness, mental wellness, nutrition, and exercise. And we will also be focusing on rolling out a more, a deeper discussion about our suicide prevention programs. And we'll be hosting experts from throughout the county to discuss various aspects of mental health and mental wellness. So, stay tuned in, generally on Wednesdays at 1:00, and then posted on Facebook. So, thank you for being with us today. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Sally, and for all the work you do.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.